I'm going to call the Wednesday, December 16th, 2020 meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to order. We have a roll call, please.
Yes. Ms. Chester?
She's on mute.
I see. I see that.
Try again.
Yeah, Ms. Chester?
I'm here.
Okay. Mr. Cho is absent. Ms. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Roche?
Here.
Ms. Yuckman?
Present.
Mr. Wormbrun?
Here.
And Mr. Welch?
Here. We have a quorum. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
At this time, I would ask for the approval of the minutes of the November 18th, 2020 regular meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review that?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
I move they be accepted as written.
Second. Alright. We have to call for a roll call again, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Alright.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roche?
Yes.
Ms. Yuckman?
Yes.
Mr. Wormbrun?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
And Ms. Chester?
Yes.
Minutes are approved. Are there any communications?
I do not believe so. Kat?
Yeah, there was one communication received with regard to the conditional use permit case. That was received this afternoon and I believe Terry sent it to you all about an hour ago. It was in favor of the conditional use permit and I can summarize that. If now's a good time.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sam Sammett or David Sammett wrote in in favor of the conditional use permit. Basically saying that Karen has done a lot to improve the property. And that the Airbnb won't be a disturbance to the neighborhood at this location. He was not here. He did write that he will not be able to attend the meeting tonight. So he expressed his public input via email.
Alright, thank you. Then we will take up the continued public hearing of ZBA-2020-C-02. A request by Karen Myers for a conditional use permit to allow an owner occupied bed and breakfast to operate at 2914 Susan Stone Drive in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District. At this time, I believe we were, when we continued, we were at the audience response portion, correct? The city had already given their?
Yeah, last meeting, we heard from the city, we heard from the property owner, the applicant. And we heard from one concerned citizen who was against the proposal. I see in the packet we have one letter that's against. Is that from Nathaniel Manzano? That, that's new? Oh, no, that's from before our last meeting, correct? So that's still from earlier?
Yes, that was received before the packet was published.
Okay, so the only correspondence we've received from this case since the last hearing is the one that came in just this afternoon in favor?
Yes.
Alright. Is there anyone? Yes, Charles, go ahead.
Do you think we should go through the whole thing again since Nancy wasn't here for any of that?
Oh, you know, I would just like to know why is it continued?
It was continued because we wanted to give an opportunity for anyone who wishes, wished to be heard, to be present. There was some concern that word hadn't got out early enough and that there may be a desire on the persons from the neighborhood to give input. So that's why it was continued.
I do have a question regarding this. You know, I did drive and did look at the property. And of course I noticed nearby, I guess in another little area, there were many duplexes. Is there, can this be used as a duplex or would that not be possible? Rather than say an Airbnb? It was really essentially built as a duplex, if you think about it.
I can answer that question. We did talk about this at the staff level. And for it to be considered or for it to be legal as a duplex, as a residential duplex, that would also have to go through a conditional use permit process. This specific conditional use permit process is for a owner occupied Airbnb or bed and breakfast under our table of uses. If the applicant were to want to pursue this as a residential duplex at any point in time, they would have to apply for a conditional use permit to make that a legal use on the property.
Well, you know, given that the residential character of that particular area, the reason I'm asking is that as a duplex, you wouldn't have probably as much traffic or different people coming in and out. It would more, and there is a tremendous need for one bedroom places to live. So seeing does that solve part of the concern of extra traffic and, you know, more people coming and going. That's why I raised that. Joanne?
Yeah, go ahead, Joanne.
Aren't the duplexes over there in one corner of the Deerfield Trail subdivision rather than in Meyer Ridge?
Right, they're nearby, however, they're very close by.
Yeah, but they're all just clustered in one spot, basically, at the end of the street.
And that's not the case. It's not the case before us. So is this, I mean, is this worth discussing?
I don't think so.
No, that's not what we have to decide, but I thought that that was a good question. As I indicated before, is there anyone on who wishes to be heard in favor of this proposal? Alright, hearing none. Is there anyone on who wishes to be heard against the applicant's proposal? Alright.
A couple of people have raised their hands here.
Oh, okay, I don't see it on my screen.
Yeah, no, that's fine. First, we'll go to Katie Rustrom.
Alright.
Harvey will have to swear you in first, Katie.
Ms. Rustrom, do you swear affirm that any testimony you give before this board tonight will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
Yes.
Alright. Go ahead, please.
My name is Katie Rustrom and I am a Realtor. I have sold real estate for the last 11 years and I live here in Urbana and proud to represent Urbana. I helped Karen on the purchase of this property and I also helped her on the sale of her previous residence, which was in Mohammed. And I can tell you that her home in Mohammed was immaculately taken care of and it sold before it even hit the real estate market. So it was in supreme condition. All of the maintenance was up kept on it. And I share that with you because there's no doubt in my mind that she is going to maintain this property in a way that's going to continue to improve the neighborhood. And I do have a lot of friends and people that I know who live in Meyer Ridge. And I've sold a lot of real estate in that neighborhood as well. And I can tell you that home values are continuing to rise despite some of the other concerns that I've heard expressed about, well, what does this do to home values? So I'm happy to share data if that's necessary, but I just wanted to open that conversation. And please use me as a resource if you have any real estate questions related to this neighborhood specifically. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who else is on, Jason?
Z, and if I remember right, from last month, Z was Alan Craig. I don't know if this is Alan again?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm Z. This is Alan Craig. All I wanted to say-
Hold on, Mr. Craig, I gotta swear you in. Do you swear affirm that any testimony you give before this board tonight will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
Yes.
Thank you.
All I wanted to say tonight was a correction to something that was said earlier tonight and that someone asked if there had been any correspondence besides the one correspondence before and then the one tonight. I know for a fact that I sent a letter that was in there and I've been told by other neighbors that they sent correspondence. So it's not true that those are the only two correspondences. That's all I wanted to say tonight.
Who was sent the correspondence? I didn't receive anything to my personal email. I'm on the contact list for if anybody has concerns. Was it sent directly to the city staff?
Yeah, I sent it to that. I know that the people who were on the call last month received it because I know they looked at it while we were on the call.
Oh, right, I meant since last month.
Oh, okay, then, then, yeah. So you saw my leg and Alan Craig?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I did.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure that was correct. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on, Jason?
Uh, no, no one else has their hand raised.
Alright. Are there any additional comments from, from the board or questions? I guess I should ask, does the staff have anything additional to add to this hearing?
I can make one statement. A revised neighbor notice was sent out on November 30th in correction to the previous neighbor notice that was sent out. And also just to give everyone more time to respond and the correct information to send any public input to. So that was sent out about two and a half weeks ago. And other than that, there have been no changes to the staff report or presentation.
Thank you, Kat. If there are no further questions or comments, are we ready to call this case for motion?
Sure, I move that in the case number ZBA-2020-C-02, we approved the conditional use permit as submitted.
It's been moved. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Now been moved and seconded. Any additional comments? Yes, Charles?
Did that motion include the staff recommendations?
Right, there are four conditions.
There were four conditions? Was, was that included in the motion or not?
Did you intend to have that?
Sorry, which was the, I'm scrolling back up now. I see the requirements for the conditional use permit. Oh, okay. I will, I will make a friendly amendment real quick and I'll ask for a re-second. amend my motion to say I recommend that we pass with the conditions that the motor, the owner must be present when the property is rented, number one. Number two, the conditional use permit shall expire upon transfer of the property or after six verifiable nuisance complaints within a 12-month period related to rental of the unit. Number three, a maximum of four guests will be allowed at a time. And parking will be available on site. And number four, the property will be subject to regular city inspection.
Alright, it's been moved now with the conditions attached to. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second. Thanks, Charles, for catching that.
Yeah. That wasn't in the permit to begin with.
Alright. Are we ready for a vote? Alright, Kevin, call for vote.
Okay, Ms. Yuckman?
No.
Mr. Wormbrun?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Ms. Chester? Ms. Chester, you're muted.
Yes.
And Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
And Mr. Roche?
Yes.
That motion carries. We'll now move on to new public hearing. Request by James Langer on behalf of Ceromex Inc. For a conditional use permit to allow an air filter manufacturing business to operate at 302 North Broadway Avenue in the B4 Central Business Zoning District. We have a staff report.
Yes, we do. And I will share my screen and turn off my video. Sorry for the- Hold on, please. Okay, thank you. Sharing the screen is difficult. So the request is by James Langer to allow an air filter manufacturer at 302 North Broadway Avenue in the B4 Central Business District. The 95,000 square foot property is located between East University Avenue and East Water Street and is just south of the former Courtesy Road, which is now vacated and north of the-
Is anyone else seeing your screen?
Sorry.
Oh, thanks.
Sorry, my apologies. Again, it is located south of Boneyard Creek and the vacated Courtesy Road and north of the Norfolk Southern Railroad. There are two buildings on the site. The applicant proposes to lease approximately 16,000 feet of the Western Building, which is a total of 50,000 square feet. This portion of the property includes 29 parking spaces, which is enough to provide parking for up to 29,000 square feet of industrial use property. The site was occupied most recently by Habitat and was formerly occupied by Gil Athletics, a manufacturer of sports equipment. The property has been zoned before Central Business since 2018. It was zoned various types of industrial zoning district between 1940 to 2018 when it was zoned to be for Central Business to allow for more various business uses and to reflect the future land use designation of the Comprehensive Plan as Central Business, which you can see here in the future land use map of the 2005 Comprehensive Plan. We have Central Business, south of University Avenue, north of University Avenue. We have Regional Business. Going back to the current zoning, the subject property and all the properties northwest and south are zoned B4. To the north and east is zoned B3 General Business. The zoning administrator determined that the proposed use is most similar to research, dental, surgical, and mortuary instruments and supplies manufacturing, which is a use permitted in the B4 Central Business District with a conditional use permit. The applicant currently operates from a smaller 4,000 square foot office suite in the Lincoln Commerce Center office building at 730 Kalarni Street, which does not provide any room for any significant amount of expansion. And let's show you some slides from there. This is the front of the office suite. This shows their current assembly area where filters are hand assembled on this table. This picture shows the fume hood where the glue is applied by hand to the cardboard frames with a power sprayer. And this picture shows a bigger shot of the main assembly room showing the assembled filters as well as the raw stock and empty cardboard frames. Activities at the current site include storage of finished air filters and components as well as a limited amount of research and development. The business currently focuses on producing higher end air filters and staff visited the site on December 9th, 2020. No heavy machinery is used, so noise is minimal, waste is minimal, noxious fumes are not generated. Larger facility would allow increased production levels of the current lines of air filters. Proposed renovations include improvements to the HVAC system, upgrades to bathrooms, offices, and conference spaces, and modernizations to the overall aesthetics of the building. You can see part of Exhibit D is a current floor plan. The southwest portion, approximately 16,000 square feet, would be the property currently occupied by Habitat and would be taken over by Serionics. We have the main assembly floor. This southeast portion would most likely eventually be repurposed into research and development area. And this northeast corner is proposed to have the build out for office space and conference space and kitchenette and would share bathrooms with the other tenant CU Adventures across in this shared space here. The applicant would like to increase the scale of activities. There would be some addition of pneumatic machinery to improve the hand assembly process. This would still be quiet and not be loud. And then they would also like to expand their target audience into sectors, including medical and aerospace. This site's previous use as a light manufacturing facility makes it an ideal site for the proposed use. The applicant would propose to start with a single day shift of six to 10 employees. The proposed use does meet the three requirements for conditional use permit. The proposed air filter manufacturing facility is conducive to the public at this location because of its access to major thoroughfares for employees with bicycle lanes and mass transit for employee traffic. This site has been light assembly manufacturing since the 1930s and is well-integrated in the downtown business district. Secondly, the proposed air filter manufacturing facility will not be injurious to the B4 District or to the general welfare. Staff levels are projected to be between 10 and 20, which is much less than the 60 employees that Gil Athletics employed at its peaks. The products and components themselves are not noxious and the assembly process does not produce noise or waste or noxious fumes. Finally, the existing building lies with the development regulations of the B4 Central Business District. No expansion is planned for the building and the proposed air filter manufacturer would generate little traffic preserving the essential character of the B4 Central Business District. The Zoning Board of Appeals may impose such additional requirements on the operation of the proposed use as are appropriate to protect public health, safety, and welfare. The findings are summarized in the staff report. Highlights are that the proposed use is conducive to the public convenience. It would not be a detriment to the B4 Business District as it would be a lower intensity industrial use than the previous light manufacturing use that was occupying the site for 70 years. And that the proposed use is consistent with the applicable regulations and preserves the essential character of the B4 Business District as it would be a quiet, low-traffic, low-intensity use and would integrate well in the downtown business district. This is a rendering of the proposed build out in the northeast corner of that large main assembly area, showing kitchenette, conference room, some breakout rooms for offices or smaller meetings. Staff recommends that the Zoning Board of Appeals approve the proposed conditional use permit in case ZBA-2020-C-04 as requested. Because the proposed use would meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance and that no expansion of the existing building is proposed, staff does not recommend any conditions. And that is the end of my staff report. The applicant, Mr. Jim Langer and the building owner, Mike Hosier, are here to take comments and answer questions.
Thank you, Marcus. Are there any questions from the Board for Staff? Hearing none. Does the applicant desire to be heard? Mr. Langer?
Yeah.
You would like to be heard, I have to swear you in, sir.
Sure thing.
Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you give tonight before this board will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for the consideration, the opportunity to put the application before you. And I think that Marcus has done a great job of articulating what we're trying to do. And just want to make myself available to answer any questions with regards to the business. But I think that it's a pretty unique fit for us due to the nature of the business that even though we're in the, technically, we're material scientists or chemists. The reality is that we're really building something that doesn't emit, you know, fumes or pollution, but rather something that's designed to actually clean the air. So we, in addition to that, I think that there's a culture match between what we're building in our business and I think the culture that I've come to associate, you know, having lived in Urbana for what, ten years now. I'm over in Champaign now, but I have a pretty good read on just the culture and vibe of the city. And I think that what we're trying to build there would be a good match for the city as a whole. So appreciate the opportunity and be glad to answer any questions that you might have for me.
Thank you, Mr. Langer. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Langer? Yes, Ashley.
Oh, I'm Nancy, but I just think it sounds like a good fit for the parcel. Sorry.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to ask quickly about the fumes thing. There was a hood for the glue situation. I presume that's all legal and everything, but a couple of times you've noted there's no emissions. Could you just explain what the hood is for the glue, spray glue that was in the photos?
Yeah, so we moved to that facility from the U of I Research Park Enterprise Works Facility. And originally, the entirety of our business was research and development. And so we were doing work that had, even then, at its worst, we deal mostly with water-based chemistries. And so the whole point of the way that we built our materials, that it would only really emit water during processing. But there's things that we've done for NASA and for the Army where there's operations where you just need to, there's certain components that you need to ventilate. In this case, what we're doing with the hood is actually just repurposing it for the purpose of providing some measure of ventilation for the glue spray. And in that case, it's a water-based chemistry that we use. It's just that we need to get some air motion in order to allow our air movement to pull any of the little bit of fine mist that might be there out. And so in the new facility, that's kind of just a stopgap. And so the actual operation that you'd use for that step wouldn't be spraying, but would rather be like a, it's called a roll coder, where you take the frame and it actually gets pulled through two rollers that pinch it and ply the glue real evenly on the frame. And so that's one of the pieces of equipment that we would be installing to operate it. And so really, there would be no need for that fume hood to move out of or to set up a comparable system at our new facility.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Mr. Langer? All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard in favor of this conditional use permit?
Mike Hosier is on as well, and I think he wants to be heard.
All right. I have to swear you in, Mike.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you give before this board tonight will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So I too'd like to thank Marcus and Kevin and Kat for their work on this. One small correction on what Marcus mentioned about shared bathrooms. The plan would actually be to install one or two new bathrooms within the Serionics space in that northeast corner that he showed the rendering of. So other than that, everything was correct. I, of course, agree with everything that James mentioned just a minute ago. And just, I just generally wanted to say that, I think everybody knows this used to be the Gill Sports Manufacturing location and offices. And we bought the building about three years ago and really are trying to make better use of a really large building with some challenging parking issues in the center of downtown Urbana. So the first phase of this with getting CU Adventures moving their escape room and shop into the balance of the, or in the balance of the west side of the building, I think has been just a tremendous asset to downtown Urbana and really helped turn this building around. And I think this is, this potential use is a good balance of transforming something that was just raw warehouse and manufacturing space to expand it into a little bit more office, meeting space, just improve the overall appearance and functionality of the building to better fit with, not necessarily the B4 zoning, but just the environment in downtown Urbana. It'll bring more people than have been in the building since Gill left, which has been almost ten years ago. It will bring more people downtown, more jobs and kind of be another phase of transforming this property into something a little bit more functional for downtown Urbana.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions? Jason, is there anyone else on?
No, that is everyone.
All right, then, if there's no one else on, then I believe we're also ready for this question to be called. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the proposed conditional use permit in case ZBA twenty twenty dash C dash zero four.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I believe we're ready to have this call for vote. Kevin?
All right. So Ms. Chester?
Yes.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roche?
Yes.
Ms. Yuckman?
Yes.
Mr. Wormbrun?
Yes.
And Mr. Welch?
Yes, that motion carries. Would all business continued review of the bylaws? Is there any staff report on this?
No, just, I think if you'll recall, at the last meeting, there were a couple of questions that I think were actually answered pretty well by a combination of Mr. Roche and Mr. Liggett. But I was going to go back and just review those just to make sure that we're all on the same page with those. And then and then we can hopefully get these things passed. So let me pull up my notes on those questions real quick.
Could I ask a question? I have another Zoom meeting. I assume the bylaws will pass. Are we voting on the bylaws?
That's the plan, yes.
And would we have a quorum if I left the meeting?
Yes, we will.
Okay, I really need to go because I have another Zoom meeting.
All right.
Okay, no problem.
Your expense.
Bye, Nancy.
Happy holidays, Nancy.
You too. Bye-bye.
All right, so the first question, if I could summarize. The question was, are the recently implemented public input guidelines that were passed by the city council only in effect during online meetings during the emergency order? Mr. Roche and Mr. Liggett both said that, yes, they are. I said I was a little bit unsure. So the short answer is yes. The longer answer, if you think about it, is that the ordinance actually creates two separate sections of the city code. One titled in-person meetings and then one for electronic virtual public meetings. Since I'd expect that we'd return to all in-person meetings after the pandemic, you know, the rules pretty much do just apply during the pandemic. If we ever needed them in the future, if we ever had to have these electronic virtual public meetings, as they're called, in the future, then they'd be in place and we could use them. But yeah, like I said, short answer, yes, these are just really intended for the pandemic. And then the second question was, does the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals have the power to extend the public input time limit? And Mr. Liggett correctly stated that the temporary rules would require a vote of the Board to extend the public input time limit. But that only applies to extending the entire public comment period beyond one hour. So there are no provisions in there for extending an individual's time beyond the four minutes that are granted. I think that's pretty reasonable since that gives every member of the public the same amount of time. So you wouldn't be picking and choosing who you would extend the time of. If anybody has any questions about those questions and answers, I'd be happy to entertain them. Otherwise, if there are any questions, I just sent out, pretty recently before the meeting, I sent out the most recent staff report with a marked-up version of the bylaws. So you all should have that again. I think that was from October originally. But I'd be happy to discuss those or leave it open for discussion.
Yes, Charles.
Okay, and this public audience participation. So what you're telling us is that we have one rule in the city now for all boards and commissions. Would that be correct?
To a certain extent, yes. But for, I think as we discussed last time, during cases, the public input can go on as long as is necessary. So this is just for that public or audience participation section at the end of all of our meetings.
All right, so they clarified that. So then I guess what I'm getting to is, for some unknown reason to me, our audience participation is at the end of a meeting. Where city councils is at the beginning, let's say. And then in the bylaws that you sent out, under audience participation, it says number three, under audience participation, it says that the public may be limited to topics germane to those described on the agenda for that particular meeting. So that, to me, interpreting that means they can only talk about what we've already done, not any new input. And I guess, I mean, we don't want them coming to us talking about trimming trees or something, but.
But I think that's a good point, and I would suggest that we strike that just based on a recent guidance that I've gotten. I don't think that we are allowed to limit public participation to certain topics.
We would just hold them to the timeline and that they were non-abusive, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, four minutes, floor is open.
And our bylaws say five minutes, so we'd go back to that in an in-person meeting?
I think that's the way we would do it. And I think we discussed that a little bit last time, so there's really no need to change that.
Right. And then I guess I have one more thing that pops up here tonight. When we continue a case, where do we start it back up again? You know, I suppose if Nancy wanted to hear the whole case, you should have read her the whole, you know, the whole case. And I don't know. It's going to be a different situation every time. Most continuances, I think, are going to be before we even get into the case. You know, this was kind of rare that we were two-thirds of the way through it before the compromise of the evening was, well, we can postpone this a month. It isn't going to affect anybody because we're talking pandemic and we're talking a housing issue. We're not talking somebody building a building or something. So is there something that we need to put in there for that purpose?
I'm not sure if that would be necessary. I think, like you said, if Nancy needed more information since she wasn't here for the full presentation, she'd be welcome to ask for it. I think, you know, reviewing the minutes, and we also have all the meetings on video now. So I think Board members could review everything in advance if they weren't able to be at a meeting. So I don't know that we would need something in the bylaws about that, but you all are making the changes to the bylaws, so.
Well, that sounds good to me that if somebody wanted to see the past meeting that they missed and they knew it was continued. I mean, sometimes if you miss the meeting, you might not know that something was continued until you get your email, which is three days, four days typically, before the meeting. So I think it'd be fine if we all realized that we can look at the tape. Okay, thank you.
Further questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Then this needs to be voted on, correct, Kevin?
That's correct.
And, yes, Charles?
So you think it's all right to delete number three under section four, their audience participation?
Is that, hold on, I'm looking.
On page six of the PDF, five of the document. Are we just deleting that first sentence? And keeping the no member of the board is obligated to respond to any public input?
Yeah.
Okay.
In that case, I move that we accept the bylaws as proposed with the exception that we strike the first sentence of section four, number three, under audience participation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Still typing out the motion, okay. That was moved by Mr. Roche, seconded by Ms. McLaughlin?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wormrun?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Ms. Chester?
Yes.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roche?
Yes.
And Ms. Yuckman is no, no longer with us at the meeting, so.
That motion carries and bylaws and revisions are approved.
Yes, and I will, I will send out a clean version as soon as I can.
Thank you.
And thank you, Charles, for catching that.
Is there any new business?
There is none.
Do we have, Jason, there's no one on, no audience?
Correct, there's no one left.
All right, so do we have a staff report?
I guess the only thing to report, I think, since our last meeting, one of our planners, the the only one planner not here tonight. Lily Wilcock passed her examination and will now be a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. So that is a professional accreditation for planners, so we're very, very pleased with that. And I'm sure she is even more pleased than we are, so.
Congratulations to her from the board.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
We have study session?
Not tonight.
All right, then, at this time, I would like to wish all my fellow board members a happy and safe holiday season. And we'll see you all virtually or someday in person in the next year. And at this point, we are adjourned.
Bye bye, everybody. Happy holidays.
Meeting's adjourned at seven fifty four P M.